Hi. Okay. You're, yeah, they're gonna recognize the source student.
Can we have a roll call, please?
This is a roll call for the City Council and Authority. Councilmember Authority Member Johnson?
Present.
Ma'am? Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris? We have a quorum.
A move to excuse Mayor Paris and Councilwoman Mann?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, so ordered. Housing Authority?
Roll call for the Housing Authority. Authority Member Harvey? Present. Ma'am? Smith?
That you run.
Thanks. Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Zetto? We have a quorum.
Move to excuse Member Mann and Zetto?
I'll second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So ordered. We have the invocation from John Meadows.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you that we live in a city that recognizes its need for you, that we open our City Council meetings with prayer. I pray that you would bless each one here, give our council and committees wisdom, Lord, bless our city, protect it, Lord God, and help each one of us to have the right priorities of putting you first, our families second, and serving others third. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Connor, will you do the pledge, please?
It would be honored. Everyone, please place your right hand over your heart and sit with me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, what we got here? Is she filling them out for everything?
Break it. We're going to recognize Joshua K. today. Joshua, you want to come up? Joshua is a senior at Desert Christian High School, a member of the varsity football track team. He rushed for over 1,100 yards, 10 touchdowns this season. Joshua received all Desert Mountain League honors for football in 2011, 2012, led the varsity football team for a second-place finish in the Desert Mountain League in the playoffs in the last two seasons. Are you good?
Yes, sir.
What position?
I'm fullback and also running back.
Good. Joshua received impact player selection for the 2013 California State Football Team and represent California against the other states and countries in the competition in Australia. Joshua competes in 100-yard dash, 200, four-by-100, long jump. Times?
It's a four-by-one and then the long jump.
What's your 100-yard?
Oh, sorry, times. For my 100, the best I received was an 11:44, and then for my 200, the best I received has been about a 24.
That's good. That's good. Not quite. Joshua's received letters from several different colleges, but he wants to play football at West Point and major in the military history while in college. Joshua is a recipient of the principal nomination Congressman Buck McKeon for the United States Military Academy. He's also received the presidential nomination to the United States Naval Academy. Wow. Joshua volunteers at Grace Resources and free tutoring and has done fundraisers for missionaries. Joshua has a grade point average of 4.1 and is chairman of the City of Lancaster Youth Commission, which I have to say he does a wonderful job at. You do great work.
Thank you, sir.
And, I understand, you've just been appointed or received an appointment to West Point.
Yes, sir.
So let's give him a big hand. Can we get your mom up?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
Our source student of the month, Kristen Scheng? You have ABC's Cool Kid Award.
Yes.
Great. Honorable mention 2011, 2012. High Desert in the pageant?
Miss High Desert.
Miss High Desert pageant. Junior Miss AV Black Chamber of Commerce. 4.0 grade point average. Youth basketball coach for 2009. She's a co-founding member of the Senior Kids or Senior Club of International Development. Community service over 300 hours. Her goals? She wants to be a sports authority, I mean attorney. And Kristen hopes to attend Florida State University in the fall of 2013 to obtain a bachelor's degree in psychology and move to law school to attain a degree in sports law. Congratulations.
Hi. Hi, how are you doing?
We'll come get a picture.
She's working with me at North of Brumman, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Newton Chalet? Mr. Chalet has a presentation for the city.
He's surgery. I apologize for being so informally dressed, but I just had hip replacement surgery. What I wanted to do is come up and basically thank the City Council and the city. About a week and a half ago, we had a coaches versus cancer basketball game out at the college, and that's something that's done nationwide. Many of you see the teams on TV, the coaches are wearing tennis shoes, and the ladies' teams are wearing pink, and it's a fundraiser for cancer. And so we joined with the American Cancer Society this year. It's the third year in existence, and when we started, I can't take all the blame for the success, but my assistant athletic director, Gary Rogenstein, back here, I told him, I said, "Gary, I want to do something special and raise some money." So with friends like him, I don't need many enemies, because he came up with an idea that would put me on the free throw line for 60 seconds and get pledges for how many I could make in 60 seconds. And so I ended up making 24 in 60 seconds, and there's no truth to the rumor that Mark Rozigan started, that if I'd have had somebody better handing me the ball, I would have made more. He started that rumor, Marvin, but I'm telling you, it's not true. But we raised $11,000 in 60 seconds for American Cancer Society. Our mayor, he got suckered in. I fished him in pretty big time. He calls right before and pledges $100 for every one that I could make. And so then Marvin comes up with the idea. He grabs a microphone and says, "Well, let's see. I got $100 here. If Newt can make one out of three blindfolded, will anybody in the stands join me?" So nine other people came out, and you had to be there to see this. Marvin spun me around for the first one, and so he said, "Okay, you ready?" I said, "Yes." So he handed me the ball, and I shot it, but I was facing half-court, and I was blindfolded, so I didn't know it. So, you know, I had to thank Marvin for that. But I did make one out of three blindfolded, so that was another $1,000. But the reason I wanted to thank the City Council and tell you about this is because it's just amazing what this community does. I mean, you know, to raise $7,000 in less than a week, 60 seconds really. The city supported this American Cancer Society here, Sandy Smith and her group, Terri Gore, and the City Council supported it. It's just, you know, it's one of those things that makes you feel good to live in Lancaster, and I just wanted to say thanks to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalet. Mr. Rozigan, we have any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna move the closed session up to now. We might have a member leave us a little later, and I want to make sure that we get that in. So we're gonna have conference with legal counsel for existing litigation under Government Code 54956.9A. Mr. City Attorney, is that right?
That is correct, and for those items listed on the agenda.
Okay. We'll be right back.
Closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A. Received a status report on case Doe versus Lancaster and gave direction to counsel concerning Antelope Valley Allied Arts Association versus Lancaster. No other action was taken on any item listed on the closed session.
Thank you. Housing Authority actions. Do we have any speaker cards for the minutes? No. We have a motion second for the minutes?
Some of them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the minutes. Let's vote. Passes three to nothing. Consent calendar. We're gonna hear a staff report from Elizabeth Brubaker. Want to wave it? No speaker cards? It's okay with me?
The action is they want to increase the estimated revenue on the account number
We have a motion, we have a second?
Some of them.
Let's vote. Motion passes three to nothing. Lancaster Power Authority. No speaker cards?
Consent, waive the report?
I second.
Okay, do we have a motion?
The move that we pass the consent calendar as current is comprised?
I second.
Let's vote. Motion passes three to nothing. Council actions, minutes?
We'll move to pass the minutes.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for M1. All in favor? Let's vote. Passes three to nothing. Okay. Nicole, you want to pull 11, 12, and 13? Yes. She has three minutes. Okay, Nicole? You want to start your time?
Hi. I'm here just to ask you not to foreclose on the Community Facilities District, because it's been a difficult time, and it's doing, I thought, good, the Facilities District through the other committees. And then also because the Community Facilities District will bring jobs for unskilled people, and it was already approved, and for the general public, it would bring jobs and then resources like organizations and society and revenue for just the general public. And then also, on MCC 11, there's just something wrong with that. I'm not sure what it is. And for CC 12, I don't believe Mr. Larson is part of the redevelopment agency. He's more of the development agency. And also, Mr. Smith, I was thinking that since you're a member now and you're not a chair, that you have more voting rights now and everything that you maybe voted on as chair. I don't think that, well, because chairs don't have the actual vote, I don't know how you... So, and then like the Heroes Park, MB1, no, just I'll wait for MB1. And also, there's for transport, the transportation, it's...
Nicole, which one are you talking on now?
I was just trying to finish all of them. The transportation, it's not on here. I'll just wait till I'm called again.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Move to pass the consent calendar as currently comprised?
I second.
Let's vote. Passes three zero. PH1. Ryan Ludick?
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have two.
Members of the City Council, the request that is before you is a general plan amendment and a zone change affecting 20 acres at roughly the southwest corner of 40th Street East and Lancaster Boulevard. It is a site that is proposed by Sunlight Partners for a commercial photovoltaic solar generation facility. This particular site, if approved for that use, would be developed with a 1.5 megawatt facility. Sunlight Partners does these types of facilities commonly. They actually have one that is under construction right now at the intersection of Avenue K8, M40th Street East within the city. Currently, this property is designated as urban residential and is zoned as R7,000. The city's zoning code does not permit commercial-style photovoltaic facilities within that particular zoning. So this applicant has requested a change of the general plan to non-urban and a change of the zoning to RR 2.5. Both of those designations would then accommodate this type of use through approval of a conditional use permit. That conditional use permit was approved by the city's Planning Commission in its December 2012 meeting, and they also recommended to you at that time the approval of both the general plan amendment and the zone change on this site. We do have Chairman Jim Voss of the Planning Commission. Should you have any specific questions about the commission's deliberation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Have you touched base with the facilities that are next to it?
Yes, the applicant has actually been in contact with the Lancaster Baptist Church, which is located east of this site. At the time of the Planning Commission hearing, they did not provide any testimony in opposition to it.
So they're okay with it?
Yes, that would be my understanding.
Okay. I'm good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Run, you good? Nicole? Okay, you're gonna wave it? Okay. Michael Reeves?
Vice Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. Of course, I'm against this. Once again, the city is putting up a solar plant by a facility where young people congregate. You can see Lancaster Baptist Church with its population of students, and we really don't know everything we need to know about solar energy. I haven't heard anything about an environmental report on the effects of solar plant energy on the environment. I oppose this. Furthermore, I would like the city to have a hearing, or if it's possible, to publish a report detailing all the solar projects in the city, so we have a handle on this. But right now, I oppose this change, and also I oppose it because here we are once again changing our area that could be used to build homes into a commercial-type area. Who knows what else they're gonna put up over there by the college? So therefore, I oppose this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other discussion? Motion and second?
We'll move to adopt Resolution Number 1308 and introduce ordinance Number 987.
I second.
Let's vote. Passes three zero. Okay. JNB1, Barbara? Michael?
Yeah, item for your consideration is both a City Council recommendation as well as a successor agency recommendation. It's to approve a loan between the successor agency and the city in order for us to make a payment to SC Fuels for an agreement that was made with them many years back. We didn't receive enough funding through redevelopment agency property tax to pay through the successor agency, so in order to make that payment, we need the loan.
Thank you. Nicole? You want to start your time? You good? Okay. Thank you. Motions? Yes.
Okay, as the City Council, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 13-09.
I second.
Let's vote. You want to do the successor agency?
Yes, as a successor agency, I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number SA 04-1.
Let's vote. Both motions pass three zero. Let's see. Okay. Hometown Heroes Banner Program.
Good evening, Council, Deputy Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. Since the inception of the program in September of 2011, we've had currently, or we currently still have 52 banners displaying hometown heroes on our boulevard. Due to the success of the initial program and requests from families to continue that program, we have decided to offer a second round of banners, and we currently have 40 families that have opted to do round two. And after discussing options with the initial group, they have wholly selected to move the banners... We gave them the option of either taking the banners home or moving them to American Heroes Park, and they unanimously voted, so to speak, to move them to American Heroes Park and keep them on display. So the new program will begin in March, and we have, like I said, we have 40 going up on March 15th, and we have an additional 20 available that we believe we will be able to fill by April 1st. The program is open to any personnel, military personnel, that have served during a time of war in a combat zone. Opportunities still exist to sponsor the banners by local businesses, and we will be redoubling our efforts to secure those sponsorships for these banners in the upcoming weeks. And while we're talking about banners, I just also wanted to give you a brief update. We are working diligently with the Boulevard associates who have also expressed an interest to have access to the Boulevard banners, and we'll be working with them throughout this process as well. So we're really, really proud of this program. It received great feedback from the community and overwhelming support, and we just want to thank our military personnel. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Can you tell us if they want to sponsor, who they contact, and where?
They contact the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Department at 723-6000, or they can come into City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's wonderful.
There's no action on this? No action on the Financing Authority? City Manager?
Two announcements. Announcements. Number one, I want to sincerely thank Mayor Paris and council members that were able to join us for youth in government, Vice Mayor Crist and Councilwoman Johnson. It was an amazing experience, and to give your time up to the students, it really made a big difference to them, and this might have been the best group of students we've had in a long time. Number two, a lot of companies and employers have wellness committees that the employees get together to sort of do competitions and stuff to increase wellness, but our wellness committee under Beverly Gload and Meg have done an amazing job of going beyond that, and they've engaged our corporate sponsors into what we're terming, we've sent this to council, but it's fast approaching, Corporate Challenge, where these and a lot of our corporations that are our corporate sponsors will come out and do things like bowling tournaments, softball tournaments, walks, runs, et cetera. It's open to members of the community. There'll be information out there to just sort of in a informal yet organized way promote fitness in the community. So I want to thank our staff for doing just an amazing job in going beyond the bounds of just their fellow employees.
It's great. It's wonderful.
Could we bring up the students that are here? And you guys want to come on up? Go ahead and introduce yourself and the position that you're in.
I'm Creed Broadwater, and I'm the Vice Mayor.
I'm Melissa Burke, and I'm a concerned citizen.
I'm Anna Tierney, and I am a council member.
Good. Good. Congratulations. Can we get a picture of them? Yeah. Ready? One, two, three. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill the cards out completely and be as clear as possible, so that if the city manager, city council, and staff need to get in touch with you, they will have your information. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your three minutes begins. Your yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow speakers to have, other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Before I proceed with the topic that I had intended to speak on, I first want to give a shout-out, if you will, to the Youth in Government program. I was a participant in that in my senior year of high school back in 2002, and I am just absolutely thrilled that that program exists. It was a wonderful experience, and I have the same feelings, although I was not a participant towards the Youth Commission. I also want to clarify that I in no way wish for my comments to impede on Michael Rivas' previous comments, so I have come before this council on numerous occasions over the years as what I would feel is, okay, what I would feel to be an, I consider myself an avid environmentalist, especially as pertaining to finding alternate energy forms and preserving natural habitat, especially in our local desert with the Joshua Trees. So I am absolutely thrilled that this city has gone to such great lengths to invest in alternative energy. Probably the only thing I can even imagine myself to be directly opposed to is the solar plant next to the Poppy Reserve. But I'm absolutely happy we have so much solar and wind going into this community. I'd like to, what I'd really like to see is more wind energy. I like what I see with the windmills at Sam's Club, and I feel like there's a lot more opportunity in the city of Lancaster for wind energy. We've done a lot with solar energy, and I'm very happy with that. I also saw earlier today on the internet a picture of a water retrieving billboard in Lima, Peru. It literally takes moisture out of the air and collects it, and the local community is free to collect that water at the bottom of the tap. So seeing the creative energy that has gone into this city in the last few years, I can certainly envision even more than just all the solar energy that we've been doing. Certainly, water is a concern, being here in the desert and having a large portion of our water come from the aqueduct. So I'd absolutely like to encourage the council to look into things that would be considered creative, genius, whatever of that sort, just absolutely new ideas. I was quite surprised by that water collecting billboard, of all things. I don't know what the energy efficiency of it is, but just the idea of it is certainly quite interesting. So I'd just like to express my pleasure with the direction the city has gone with alternative energy and encourage further development, especially in wind and brand-new ideas. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you. Michael Reeves?
Vice Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't have the privilege of attending the business conference last week at the fairgrounds. You know, I'm retiring. I couldn't afford $150 to go out there. You know, for $150, I can feed my cats for almost a year. But I was impressed in the media by the comments made about job creation in the AV, and I'm happy to learn that people are focusing on getting the unemployment rate down in the community. However, I had an opportunity also recently to look at my property tax bill. I think in the future, the city ought to consider also doing what it can to reduce the property taxes for the property taxpayers in Lancaster. For example, let me give you an example of something from 2009 to 2012 on my property tax bill. One of the charges was water standby, and it was $10 then and $10 now, which, you know, that's impressive. One of the other things not impressive was the sanitation fees, which were in 2009, $310, and this time around, it was $448. Thanks to Councilman Smith, we had a break for a few years on not having our sanitation rates increased, but it had to happen. Other fees, like the light maintenance district, that's pretty consistent. It was $85, $97 in 2009, and $91 in 2012. So what's wrong with this? What's wrong with it is the value of my property. My property was $103,000 in 2009. Now, it's, the total was $74,000. The net taxable value is $67,000. So I have a house that's a third less value, and I'm paying the same taxes. I know Mark has done a great job of keeping the city running and with all the fiscal crisis, but let's concentrate a little bit more on helping the property taxpayers in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Rosigian?
Just to maybe make a couple of comments on that. One, some of the things that Michael mentioned, lighting and such, are under the control of the city as special, and we have kept all those low. The councils, every budget year, thought of creative ways to keep those low or not raise it. The general property tax, however, is the purview of the county of Los Angeles, County Audit Controller, or the assessor, excuse me, and the city gets very little of that. The city gets like 6.83%, and the other 93-plus percent goes to the county and special districts. So you might want to, you know, take that up with the county assessor.
Thank you, Michael. That's all the speaker cards we have. Did the closed session. Okay. Housing authority is adjourned until Tuesday, March 12, 2013. Do we have any comments by any of the council members? City council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, March 12.